And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and any citizens' comments today?
No.
Okay, one up here, okay. So that brings us to spotlight on Brentwood.
Thank you, everyone, for a chance to share some good news with us this evening. Just to go over how we share our news, our four big strategic priorities, so we split them into those groups. So our first one for the month of January. All right, student success, our first big strategic priority. All right, you'll see some fantastic artwork on your screen. Eighteen Brentwood High School students have been honored for their powerful artwork in the 180th Cases Campaign. It's an initiative partnership with the United Way of Greater St. Louis and the St. Louis Post-Dispatch. All eighteen of Brentwood High School's entries earned Top 40 recognition. So what Top 40 recognition means is you're featured in print and digital versions of the St. Louis Post-Dispatch right around in the end of December time, so this is something that has already happened. And all of the artwork for the top forty recipients are displayed at the Missouri History Museum in Forest Park. So just looking up here, we didn't get first place, but these four are the top five. We had eight in the top ten, and then eighteen out of the forty. So basically, half of the top forty recipients were Brentwood High School artists, so just fantastic. So from going like at the top left and around, second place, Kensington Kurd, our all-state cross-country runner, so not only is she smart and athletic, but she's also a very talented artist. Elise Strassner to the right, below, Elizabeth Butler, and if you'll remember her from a couple months ago, she was in that international art competition as a finalist, and then actually won the age thirteen to sixteen category for that. And then finishing out the top five, Lucas Kelly. So this recognition highlights their exceptional talent and ability to convey empathy and awareness through art, and that's with Mr. Tim Rumpel, so the art teacher. So just another fantastic display of academics, but also passion and things like that through art. Any questions about that one? This is fantastic. So you might have seen it leading up through to the holidays and things like that, so it's a way for folks to donate, and the United Way and the Post-Dispatch raise funds for it and things like that through art. Very great. All right, the next one. There it is. All right, this, I won't spoil it yet, let me describe it, and then I'll tell you who this is. Mark Twain Elementary School third graders brought history to life last month, transforming into some of Missouri's most influential figures for the school's annual Famous Missourians Living Museum. So after weeks of research and preparation, students delivered captivating presentations, wore creative costumes and authentic attire, and proudly shared their knowledge with their classmates, educators, and then lots of family members coming through that day, and kids got to give their spiel to them. So I went there, Dr. Zelinski went there. It's a very cool, brand-new space in that atrium, and Mark Twain entered into the cafeteria. Each student stands there, very still, quiet, and there's a little circle button on the ground. So when you walk up to them, you press that button, and then they let it rip.
But they will not. If you don't press the button, you can stand there, and if you don't press that button, they will not start talking.
Yeah, so, and they will, they will, they'll stand there, and they'll tell you all about the person that they're dressed as, that they've made a very informative diorama behind them. So this young man is, let me make sure I get his name right, Alan Charles. And if you're at Mark Twain, you have to have someone that's dressed as Mark Twain. So Alan is dressed like Mark Twain, giving his spiel as Mark Twain, and all the fun facts and things about Mark Twain. This is an interactive project, aligns with Missouri learning standards for third-grade social studies, and helps students gain a deeper understanding of Missouri's past and impact on the present. And that's third-grade teachers at Mark Twain, Stacy Lanhercic, and Crystal Haste. So the third one we have for student success, there we go, first try. And this was just last week or two weeks ago, this was during Snowmageddon, so we had, yeah, we had one day at school on Thursday, and we were able to, and it was originally scheduled for that day, so we didn't have to reschedule, but we had the high school's annual alumni panel. So Brentwood High School welcomed back seven graduates from the class of 2024 to participate in an alumni panel of their first semester of college. So right here in this room, current juniors and seniors came in, filled the lecture hall, and all these students answered questions about post-secondary life, including academic expectations, time management, making connections on campus, all that good stuff. So just some backstory, the class of 2024 submitted 216 applications to 104 institutions nationwide, and earned more than 1.6 million in scholarships. For last year, students selected 22 different schools to continue their academic careers, including Florida State, Missouri S&amp;T, and Wash U. So if you kind of go left to right, Missouri S&amp;T, Iowa, Minnesota, the White Twins, SLU, and then two Wash U kids. And then we had someone, this was extremely cool, Cora Erhan is on the laptop there, and she zoomed in from Germany, and talked about her kind of non-traditional post-secondary gap. So it's not necessarily like she's just floating around Europe, it's more structured, but because of the things she did at the high school and through our, through multilingual studies, I think she, yeah, she got the seal of my literacy, and two, right?
Two, French and German.
And German, yeah. So she's over there right now. She mentioned a, like a two-week excursion through Italy. So obviously, you know, not the typical post-secondary thing, but just an example of an opportunity that kids could take advantage of here, and to have her on there was pretty cool. All right, so moving on. There it goes, to school culture. One of the things we focus on, or one of the four bullet points in school culture, is supporting and valuing our teachers and staff. So what we really wanted to do is recognize our facilities team, so, and this is depending on who you are. If you were, if you were adults with kids, and you had winter break and then Snowmageddon, you were very happy for these folks to do what they did that week. If you were students, maybe you wanted a little bit longer break. But a resounding thank you to our outstanding facilities team, led by Andy Harvet and Lyndon Carroll, for their incredibly hard work during the recent Snowmageddon, their dedication to claim snow and ice, ensuring our buildings were safe and ready to return, and warmly welcome back students and staff for winter break. That's Charles Vaughn, one of our fantastic custodians, and those are the high school steps right there. So not easy work, but they did a great job, and one of the reasons why we were able to have that, that alumni, that alumni panel on that Thursday was because of the work of these folks. So I just wanted to publicly recognize them for all they did. All right. There we go. All right, so diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. There we go. All right, and I'll explain the picture in a second, but the Brentwood School District is proud to join the St. Louis Mosaic Project as an ambassador, as an ambassador school. This partnership supports our strategic priorities and provides resources to engage informed, born students, families, and community members. Some of the current things we do to qualify to be named as an ambassador school, we have that Missouri Seal of Bilinguality program, multilingual communication efforts to make sure our, the information we send is translated in families' preferred language, to make sure that we can connect families with diverse linguistic backgrounds. We also promote cultural awareness through special events and visual displays, which reflect the vibrant diversity of the Brentwood community. So this picture is, it's actually coming up, and I think it's in February, right? February? All right, this is BECC's multicultural night, and this is just one example of all the fantastic special events that we do, the multi, or the multipurpose room at the new ECC, filled with different tables and exhibits from different countries, and just an excellent way for our youngest learners to go around with little passport books and, and look and see and touch and feel and taste all the different things that make the community so interesting and unique. And just for some background, not every, this is not for every school, not every school is a part of it, but just for some background for public schools, places like Clayton, Ladue, Parkway, Webster Groves are in it, and then on the private side, Chaminade, De Smet, MICDS, Narix, St. Joseph, and SLU. So we're in some pretty good company there. All right, and then our last one. There we go. Normally, this is Unified Community Engagement, but tonight we changed it to Unified Community Support. Yeah, so for Unified Community Support, we extend our deepest gratitude to the entire Brentwood community for coming together with compassion and strength following the tragic loss of Brentwood Middle School eighth grader Sean Banks Jr. The unwavering support of our community for supporting Sean's family, friends, classmates during this difficult time has been a powerful reminder of the care and unity that defines our community. Together, we continue to honor Sean's memory and support one another in healing. So just a great example of everyone coming together to support each other. The Brentwood Middle School PTO for organizing a very well-done tribute and memorial celebration for Sean during winter break. And then the other thing, it was during winter break, so this is, it was, it was tough. But then coming back to school, making sure that we had resources in place to, to help staff, to help students. And then even Sean went through McGrath first before, and if you guys, if you remember, the previous school counselor at McGrath, Donna Knobie, so she would, we even, we called in all, all folks, and Donna rescheduled a flight to make sure that she could come back and be ready to meet our students the day they returned to school. So just a great example of even when you leave us, you're still with us, and we still need you, and you're here to support us, and we're all together, and making a difference, and doing what's best for our students and staff. So that's all that I have. Any questions for tonight?
That was great. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
All right, next, if we could have roll call, please, Kate?
Mark Cicero.
Here.
Brian Dodson.
Here.
Ryan Flynn.
Here.
Keith Ravenberg.
Here.
Katie Spall.
Lindsay Spencer.
Here.
Carrie Trossel.
All right, if I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's approved, and that moves us into the superintendent's report.
Okay, first up, we have Mr. Matt Norridt with our umbrella policy.
Good evening. Just want to make sure I'm in a good spot so you can hear me. I was working recently with Kate, listening to some audio, trying to listen to myself, and I know that I haven't been picked up very well on some of the recordings, so if I need to speak up louder, I don't take offense. So tonight, we have the umbrella policy. Last month, we brought forward the commercial package. The umbrella policy that we bring forward tonight is an amount of insurance that's in excess of our commercial package and workers' comp that we had. So this amount that we're asking for is an additional $8 million of annual coverage and $3 million per occurrence. Our general liability package always picks up first, and then this is a supplemental amount above and beyond that. This year's amount that we are asking, we are recommending for approval is $3,961. It's a $440 increase from the previous year. This is a continuation of the exact coverage that we had in the previous period, previous year.
If I could get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the umbrella policy as outlined.
Discussion.
So is the increase in line with previous years as well?
This amount is slightly higher. The year before was 3,400, so the 2023 year was $3,495. So this is almost double the increase of what we've seen in previous years. This isn't anywhere near the increase that we asked for in general liability coverage. But to be clear, this is about 12.5% increase, so it isn't a small increase, even though the dollar amount, when we were looking at such a large increase in general liability, $440 doesn't look that large.
I think, so at the 8 million, this is what we've been doing for many, many years prior to all.
So this is the maximum umbrella policy coverage that we're permitted to obtain. So I think it was about four years ago that Music actually changed their provider, so the, the volume, the amount of coverage, has been reduced somewhat from that period of time, but we continue the practice of trying to be well insured, and especially for, for this amount of money. I feel that it's a good presentation or a good representation of insurability. The plan itself has limited reserves, so in a catastrophic event, this would be coverage that would come in above and beyond what Music actually has in place for our coverages through a separate insurance policy, even though it's provided through Gallagher, Bassett, and Music.
So other coverages, you said that the 8 million is the maximum, what, what other coverages did you, did you consider or look at?
So there's lesser tiers that we can purchase. The dollar value in those tiers is not radically different. They are represented on the attachment that was presented to the school board, so those range anywhere from a million dollars to 8 million dollars. A million dollars of additional coverage is $1,400. So the recommendation of 8 million dollars is 3,900. So, you know, a million dollars, if we're talking about a catastrophic event, doesn't go very far, so that's the reason why we're making the recommendation of the eight. So tornadoes, floods, earthquakes, the only thing this package does not cover is it doesn't have an excess amount for cybersecurity. And many insurance policies are writing that out or limiting the amount that you can access.
Can we get cybersecurity, can we, so, correct?
Yes, and we meet all the requirements that Music asks us to, so we go down a very strict checklist every year. I work with our Director of Technology to make sure that we're meeting those requirements. He tells me we are. I don't know what all of it means, to be honest, I'm an accountant.
All right, any more questions for that? Just all in favor for the umbrella policy, say aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Got one more.
Sorry.
Matt, so today, we're gonna, we have tuition on the agenda. We are required to approve a tuition rate by February 1st, and with that, we talked about how this is also a really good time for us to revisit the conversation as to whether or not we want to change policy and accept tuition-paying students. We don't need to vote on that today, we do need to vote on the tuition rate today, if that makes sense. So Matt will talk about numbers and the tuition rate. To be clear, if we don't change our policy, this rate is set because we're required to, and we don't really use it for anything. So it's not, nobody's paying us that money, we don't have any students that are paying that tuition right now, we're just required to set a rate, thinking back to when some school districts lost accreditation and sent students here, that was the rate that they had to reimburse us, was that set rate. Right now, there are no unaccredited districts, so we don't, and there are other, if you look at the policy, there are other kind of reasons why perhaps a school district would pay us tuition for a student, but right now, we currently don't, we haven't for a while. So again, two parts to the conversation tonight, one, tuition rate, which we do need to approve, the other is more of a discussion around the policy and the conversation as to where we want to move with that, and should we want to go a little bit further. So, Matt, sorry, I don't want to steal too much of your thunder there, but wanted to clarify, because I know the way it's listed can be confusing.
I still have a dollar amount.
Yeah, he's got the money, though.
So, just like Dr. Eric Zelinski just stated, by February 1st, by policy, we're required to set a tuition rate. DESI gives us a formula on how we're required to calculate that. We can calculate an amount that's lesser than that maximum. The amount that we're presenting this evening is the cost of the educational value. So this doesn't include our debt service costs, this doesn't exclude our capital projects cost. So the amount that we are asking for to set as our tuition rate is $24,404.59. Last year's tuition rate was $30,548. Again, this is the clear distinction between this. Last year, we would have included debt service and capital projects. This year, because of the investment that we made into our facilities, those costs aren't being reflected because our cost went up so radically, so much more than the previous year. So that calculation would have been closer to $40,000, which, when we make that comparison to our peers, makes us look radically more costly, and we're taking out, the proposal we have is taking out that anomaly, so taking out that cost of the investment in our elementaries this last year. So the amount that we do have presented would be an amount that if we were to, a school district lost accreditation, or there's other surrounding, there's other RSMOs, Missouri revised statutes, that permit a student to pay tuition to be enrolled in our school district. So in those narrow instances, at this current time, this would be the rate that those individuals would be responsible for.
And do you remember that all of the policies are out, like, there has to be space for some, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, we talk about policies, if there's not, we don't have to open other sections, you don't have, you worked in the limitations, we're able to set those for most of the, for most situations with tuition, except for the ones that were required by law. But even if, again, a district lost accreditation, you still are able to set the standard at a size, and they don't, you can cap the amount of students that you're, you allow with the student you might be charging.
Yeah, the recommendation that we have before you is not changing any of these items, it's just what our policies are currently, and whatever the state of Missouri requires us to perform through the legislature.
Do you have a feel for how this compares with the surrounding businesses?
So Clayton charges 19,000, they publish that on their website, they've been having 3% increases, so we're assuming, you know, they'll be in the twenties for the following year. They haven't presented that figure yet. School districts, if you want us to perform a survey of that, we can collect that, if it's published on their websites, we can pull that down. So many of the school districts use Board Docs or Assembly or something similar.
Well, do they not use this formula for calculating it?
They do use this formula. So the formula that we use, we have to calculate based on what Missouri, Missouri's basically formula is, and then the amount that we can ask can be lesser than the amount. We can't ask for an amount of tuition that exceeds the DESI's formula.
So let me, let me first make a motion, let's, I'm making a motion to approve tuition rates for fiscal year '25, '26.
All right, discussion. Carry on.
This isn't the ballpark that Ladue has brought to their board, the 24, the $24,000 one is in there. The practice of removing your bond, the construction cost of debt service is fairly common. That, that is, I'll be honest, Clayton kind of surprised me that theirs is even lower than what that may be, and their approach, but it, the language is very clear, that those two pieces can be taken out, and that would be, I see more. But I don't know, that's my experience, so we can definitely look into other districts and get additional information for you.
For further clarification, I contacted Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, For further clarification, I contacted Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, asked them these specific questions, and they confirmed that this was well within their guidance. So this is not something that, you know, I didn't ask a neighboring school or a peer. I called Department of Ed.
So it's a blended number that we got here. Do districts ever charge different fee costs depending on this?
It's up to the discretion of the school board. We're recommending a blended rate, but there is the option to perform, to have two rates. Typically, it would be like a K5 and then a secondary rate.
Why is that? Why would we not want to do separate rates?
So it really doesn't make a vast difference. The argument is, is that at the elementary levels, that the costs sometimes are lesser, especially for our school districts. Sometimes we have some large class sizes in the elementaries, so it actually makes our, because we're spreading that over a larger population of kiddos, our cost of tuition would be less than what we're presenting tonight. At the secondary level, the cost of tuition would be higher.
Right, and the only reason I ask is because the way that the schools work is that, I mean, we all know that. So if we do decide as a district to start, you know, charging tuition or letting people come in for tuition, if we want to be competitive, I was just wondering maybe why elementary would be?
One of the things, and it's a good question, because we talked about it, Matt and I talked about it at length, the 24.4, in the weekend update, Matt shared his spreadsheet that had some of the private schools. And it puts us, if we did the high school tuition, it would put us at 27.3. And that is a little bit higher, closer to the boroughs and MICDSs of the world, where 24 falls in there. And then the 21,000 puts us pretty high at the elementary level. So as a matter of 24 felt like it, if we really are going to charge tuition and want students to come, it kind of falls in the middle where it, if I'm going to pay for MICDS and we're the same price, am I going to, is that really going to be what happens? You know, and again, that's for us to decide if we want to go down that policy. Because we don't have anybody else that's paying us the tuition, it felt like, you know, again, it is the instructional cost, but remembering we're not actually going to add teachers, you know, actually going to add, you know, it's a per student rate that we use the formula, but it's a, I don't say profit, but it's coming in, it's a positive.
So if we do, kind of do open enrollment, there's, I'm assuming there is some sort of administrative cost to get that entire program into place, and would that impact this rate at all?
No, because honestly, if we went to a place, and this kind of leads to the other part of the conversation, the requirements for tuition, because we can set criteria, but they have to be very, Roddy's going to jump in and help me, because she's got full ears, I have her notes. They have to be broad criteria that can be universally applied. We are still a public school, we cannot put academic expectations, we cannot put major expectations, but we can say things like, you know, a family member works in the Brentwood, in the Brentwood School District, do we put those in there? But then from that, that's really, that's it, except for Roddy's Department of One that gets to accept applications and that kind of thing. So that's the cost.
Yeah, that's what I was, you know, whether it's, you know, putting things out on the website, you know, communicating that out, the additional burden to the staff to go through and handle questions and walkthroughs, I mean, there's a lot of, I would think, a lot more things that occur if we do this type of open enrollment.
I think, yeah, I think, I will be very curious to see the amount of that.
Oh, for sure.
But yes, there will definitely be, and especially as we first get started and getting some of those pieces up and running. But we're used to kind of fielding a lot of questions already from families about this kind of thing, and so now it, just instead of saying, no, we don't accept students that pay tuition, it's, here's a form. So the calls are still coming, and we're still managing it. It's just not a matter of, here's a form to fill out. So there is definitely, there will be an increase in work, but I don't think, I think that 24 or 27,000 will more than, more than cover the amount of additional cost on that end.
So do we have a, an understanding of, I guess Clayton has open enrollment as well. How many additional students come through?
About 60.
I asked their superintendent, and they said about 60.
60 people?
I was shocked by that.
That seems like a higher number.
We're a very affluent area.
I think also they, you know, order.
But they also have, I think, different facilities as well.
There is also, so their procedures are, the preference or their, their criteria are that it is parents, a grandparent lives in the district, a parent works in the district, or there is a sibling already in the district. And those are the three criteria, and you can apply those universally. And so I think those are ones that we would recommend, I think are very reasonable. So that is.
I'm just kind of, kind of played devil's advocate for a moment. You know, taking out the debt and the CapEx, that significantly lowers the rate for somebody coming in. That's putting a lot more burden on the Brentwood community and our taxpayers. Is, how did you guys derive at that 24K? Not just from a market standpoint, but also from, you know, considering our community?
We used the formula, and so the nut, like, you either, so if you look at the spreadsheet that we shared, these are the options. Like, we didn't just pick 24,000, you have to use the blended rate, correct me if I'm wrong, but then we had to use the formula. And so you either have the capital and it's this, you have the debt service, you add, so it's either 24.4, it can be 26.4, excluding bond construction costs, which is 31.4. So it's, it's one of those for the blended rate. So you, we can't just pick. Now, I will say Clayton does kind of just, they just go lower and kind of pick theirs based on the comparables. We picked the blended rate that was specifically just excluding capital expenditures and debt service. We just removed those chunks, didn't play any other game, like wiggle room or negotiation outside of that. Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah, it does. So this, I think you said, this represents the amount that the state says you cannot charge more than?
No, there's a higher rate that we have in the shared spreadsheet that is greater than this.
So we can, whatever we agree to. So if we approve the 24.4, which is the blended rate without capital expenditures and debt service, we cannot charge more than that 24.4. That's what we, that's what we have to approve tonight. We could do the full tuition calculation, which is 47, the blended rate of debt is 47.7, or you could do the excluding just the bond construction, and that's 31,000. Like, so there's layers that we could, and whichever one we approve, whatever one we approve is the one that we cannot charge.
The amount that we can't exceed is the 47.
Yeah.
Yes, completely.
The amount that we have presented does not exceed the 47. 47,000 is the amount that's the state calculation that we cannot exceed.
But we're free to pick, like Clayton, okay, if it's 90,000, they pick that, not we have it here, but if we.
Yes.
Because their price with this is going to be higher if they do the calculation.
Their price is derived very much against comparables.
The tuition rate that they're charging is driven by comparables, not the formula. Like, they take the formula and they go, you can go lower, you can't go higher than the formula. So there's, let's say their blended rate, that ours is 24.4, theirs may be 22, well, it's actually probably around that, if not a little higher. There's, they can go lower, they chose to go lower than that. You just can't go higher than that, if that makes sense.
Because the kids have to consider that making that higher, whereas we don't have anything.
Well, I think that's the part where the conversation gets a little, we can charge whatever we want to charge. If we're really interested in the, in changing our policy to accept tuition-paying students, which is entirely a board decision, up to the board to decide, setting the full tuition calculation rate at the blended rate of $47,000, nobody's going to pay $47,000. So we wanted, we wanted to also find, like, if we're going to make that shift, then we wanted it to be in the reasonable ballpark, and that, without us doing any maneuvering of the money other than the calculation based on removing capital expenditures and debt service. That's where we just decided, that's the flat. It felt like we're not trying to game anything and play the private school, whose school, what, this is just what it costs to instructionally without the capital expenditures and debt service. So that's why we are recommending the 24.4. It also does align, when you look at the private schools, in the ballpark of those private schools, so that if families would want to look at Brentwood, meeting those other criteria, it feels like there is the possibility they would actually maybe send their kids to Brentwood. Again, if, this is where it's kind of hard, because this has to be approved tonight. We don't have to change the policy, but, but I would tell you that anything really above that 24, I mean, I still don't know how many families, if any, we would get even with the 24. I can tell you at 47 or 31, I don't think we're going to win.
Does this include, I read through this, and I don't, does this include books and it's all in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that something with private schools, you get there and, you know, all of a sudden it's a couple thousand for books, then it's this and that, and there's, you know, close the gap?
And we discussed that as part of our presentation. It wasn't very clear based on the websites of what additional fees. So, you know, meal prices, we're obviously going to still charge for meals for kiddos that are coming in on tuition, but, you know, Chromebook fees or computer fees, book charges, any of those fees were not always clear. And the other thing with the private schools is sometimes there's foundations that will move that amount based on scholarships. So it's very much a sliding scale. So everything that we presented was just the clear information that was presented on those websites.
So we didn't count any of their fees in what is on that one spreadsheet, just because it got really difficult, and some posted that and some didn't. And so we would not charge those fees, because we don't. For our students, they would pay for lunch and those kinds of things, and even normally charge one of our kids. But again, they would become Brentwood students if they're here, they're Brentwood students. It, you know, changing the policy, this was something we talked about this summer, there's, there's pros and cons, there's, I don't think we're going to have a bombing of few families, but we do get phone calls from people that ask, or people that move and want to stay. And right now, they can't, because we don't allow them to accept tuition paying. And so this would allow a family, if they chose to move and wanted to stay in Brentwood, they could pay, you know, the tuition, and they could stay here. We can't do that in our current policy. So there's, you know, there are opportunities that I think it's worth talking about and deciding if this is something that we want.
Now, this is just setting the tuition rate, not.
Yes.
It's not changing the policies, but knowing that what we're deciding right now with this tuition rate will decide what we charge for tuition.
But that's the disconnect that I have. Why are we trying to set the rate before we're making a decision?
Because we have to by February 1st.
Yeah, we have to do it.
But can they, because can that rate be different for, if we do open enrollment?
No, that's what, we checked with the lawyers, correct? What we set this is, is what we have to.
Yeah, so whatever we set has to be it, and then while, while technically we can set it lower if we wanted to, we were advised, that's, setting it artificially low opens us up to some risk, like litigation from our taxpayers, and subsidizing non-represented students to come to Brentwood. So the, right, so the rate that, that is being recommended is checking DESI and everything else, like, it's basically about as low as, I think Brentwood could go, and still be fully compliant with what it ought to be, and also just set it so that it's clear, we're not trying, we're not trying to attract lots of people at some subsidized rate, it's just, this is the rate, should we go down the road of opening it up to tuition-paying families. We still, and I should say, the board still has the, the authority to set prioritized criteria if they would like, and all of this is just within our ability with the current staffing we have to accommodate the students in the class sizes that our board has set our preferred class on. So there's, there's really no risk in, you know, overpopulating our classrooms or anything like that, because it is entirely the board's discretion, even if we're revised in the policy to allow tuition-paying students. The board would get to set the parameters for how many, what our preferred class sizes would be, and then also any prioritized criteria alike up there in the district, or, sorry, in the, in the boundaries, parameters of the boundaries.
So just going back, last year, the rate was at 30,000, and this year, we're bumping that, we're taking out the debt, we're taking out the CapEx, and we're knocking it down 6,000 to 24.4. Is that right?
Yes.
And nobody paid that rate last year. It's, I just, I didn't want to get clear.
I totally understand, but we're, we're trying to approve.
Yes, to figure out, yes.
Both, right? And we'll have that discussion on tuition and open enrollment next, but this kind of pays that down.
Yes, yes.
So, but I, and then do you, and I was just looking in here, too, I feel like we are often one of the highest set tuitions in St. Louis County. Just using the, without having in, having any of our construction funds and their capital funds, we are still one of the very most expensive tuition set districts, including Liddo, Clayton, just because of the number of our students. Because you just take our whole budget, you divide it by the number of students, it's going to be pretty high. So I do think that fitting into that reasonable tuition base with our peers is something we should be looking at, too, because when we go and we're presenting information about Brentwood School District, and let's say our tuition is, we say it's $30,000 to educate each child within our district, and everyone else around us is 22, you know, we're a real anomaly there, that may not be, I, it, does it cost 30,000 to educate one student to grow in?
Not, not one additional one.
Yeah, right.
Not one additional, no.
So just something that I've noticed over the years, when we're talking about setting the tuition rate, this is something we've discussed. What appears also.
I guess, oh, I guess it really, I'm kind of with you on the, you know, if we want to do this and we want to be competitive in, you know, accepting these students, then that kind of factors in the decision whether or not it should be 24. I think 31 to me just sounds like a completely hypothetical, you know, it's, it's an academic number, it's not practically ever going to apply. Nobody's going to pay that. You know, gee.
I mean, I think we have an excellent product, and I think it's worth 31,000. I don't know if anyone's going to pay it in the public school sector. I think we have a wonderful product here, but I think that's just not.
I think that's a good methodology to get to a number, if we're still following it, maybe some adjustment in prior year. The community definitely will care about and value class size, and that is something that will protect the, of course, and not part of this conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be pretty, I'll be just kind of frank and honest, I mean, it does feel like we're subsidizing some of this. It also feels like if we are so far off from other districts, we really need to ask our question back to ourselves on the board, why is this number so high? What are some other levers that we can pull to bring this number down a little bit per student?
At the 24,000?
Just, yeah, per student, yeah. Raising enrollment. Well, that's one, yeah, that's certainly one way. But if it's busy and has a bunch of kids, that's where creep on number down. Right, or controlling costs. Does this go into effect, like, so since the school year starts in August, will this be February 1 through January?
This will be August.
It's to August.
This will be next year's tuition rate.
This is next year's tuition.
This will be the '25, '26 school year.
It just has to be approved, okay.
Yes.
Pretty good question.
No.
Good question. All right, any more questions? Or not any more discussion?
I think if we, if, and one day we're in a situation where we would be like, let you have 60 kids, I think we should put a better lens to this than just uniform, you know, because it's affecting affordability for folks who, who may need it more than some of their own residents. And though we shouldn't subsidize it, you want it to be reasonable, to make it accessible.
Okay, well, let's, let's go on the blended rate of 24,400. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that is our rate for the '25, '26 school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we can keep talking, we get to keep talking about tuition and open enrollment if we want to continue this conversation tonight.
At some point, oh, we will.
It is.
It's going to be part of our next policy.
I think this needs a lot more discussion.
Yeah, no, we don't, I don't want to.
Oh, yeah, we're not, because tonight was just like, kind of, since we're setting the rate, just that I feel like we, maybe keep, I feel like we bring this conversation up a little bit every year around tuition, being students, and. conversation up a little bit every year around tuition, being students and.
For our, just if this is, if it is okay, I would like, I can do some research on what other districts' rates are, to point what other districts accept tuition, kind of in our comparable area. And then I'll do a little bit of digging of how many students we have, and we'll try to get some of this research done. And so then in our policy range, I think it's in March, we can bring this back up and we can talk through because then it will, you know, it'll relate to whether or not we would change that policy and we can even draft it and then decide, I mean, I, again, this is.
Just conversation right now.
It's just conversation right now and it, it could be, I have no idea what the change would actually do, but I can get a little bit more research from the surrounding areas to give you, you know, those who accept tuition, how many kids are they really looking at? Is Clayton, I, I think Clayton is a nominee. I, but it's worth, because Ladue does not accept tuition, so, but I'd like to do some research.
It just feels like there's a lot more.
Yeah, there's a lot. It's been doing it for 10 years or something like that. They made a big, it seems like it was like 10 years ago, they made a big announcement that they were going to do that. And they said, because we've got such a great school, other people ought to be able to participate if they want. And, and so apparently it's, it's working for them. I, I guess, well, I've said this before, I think it'd be very interesting to see what you can find out about what other districts are doing, if anything, because that might help us have a feeling for what we'd like to do, but, you know, we have, we have room to educate more kids here and.
For sure.
And, and I think we should look at it.
So I will get that data and I'll have all of that. When I get it, I'll put it in, we give that data, but then we'll still talk about it.
If there's any way, and now this is probably too much to ask, but if you could somehow try to find out what, what grades these 60 students are, wherever it is.
Yeah, okay, that's, I can easily find out.
So how, how would tuition, accepting tuition affect our funding otherwise, if it were to develop?
One more real quick question. Did we have any inquiries at all? Or, I know we don't have any, but do we have?
We get more inquiries, Kate and Ronnie can talk about it. People ask if they can come here. I don't know if they mean tuition or not tuition paying, or, you know, are you accepting students?
I mean, I had probably four or five this school year. And to be honest, I have no idea whether those families would actually be willing or able to pay the tuition rate if we had one set. But, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, I got one from a parent who worked in the boundaries of Brentwood, asking if she could bring her child here to kindergarten next year. It stands right now, we don't accept any of those students. I don't know, Kate, if you regularly get calls about tuition?
They don't ask about tuition, they just ask about enrollment. And why do I have to say if we, we don't accept tuition based, uh, district students? And I was saying at this time, and they're like, oh, well, we're going to, so I kind of quit saying. So anyway, but, you know, I get several calls.
So I think, I, I think the key point is, would they still pay the 25? I don't know. Like if we set the tuition, so, but that, we don't know. Okay, so we'll do some digging, get some more information for everyone's a bit. When we chat next time, we have some more data in front of us to help guide us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
If, if in your research, you run across any information about things, you know, if they, if somebody says, yeah, we did it and then we stopped and the reason we stopped is because whatsoever, or we thought about it and decided not to because of whatever, you know, these kinds of things to help us think through it. Because, I mean, so I just want to be, try to avoid unintended consequences or something like that. And I don't know what, what they all be. It's just, you know, I guess ideally you have a couple more, two or three more kids in a grade or something. And that doesn't cost us more, it really doesn't, you know, to any degree. But it generates some revenue for the district and it, you know, it increases, makes the community more interested, you know, if things from kids are coming from different places. Even Germany has.
Have a watch to a school for years.
So. Yeah, so we'll do some digging.
The transfer kids were, were the first example.
All right. Excellent. All right, so I will do some, some digging and share information as I find it. Let's see how this is. Okay, someone's still sitting. Let's see, I got, okay, it's working, I think it's working. I got a good angle. I think I have a better angle than Tony had. Okay, so tonight, we're going to chat a little bit about the, the D E S I survey that we give. So I'm not sure, some of this may be repetitive, so I apologize if this was shared with you last year. But under M CIP 6, which is the sixth iteration of our school improvement plans, which is state requires for our accountability, we are actually required to give culture and climate surveys every year to students, parents, and staff. There are actually three very specific questions you have to ask in each of those surveys. Some school districts have outsourced that and purchased survey tools, but because many districts, D E S I is very good at giving us mandates that cost money. And so D E S I did, in this case, create a culture and climate tool that districts can use. So Brentwood has been choosing to use that, at least last year. The spring, I believe, was the first. At least it's the first state I have been privy to that we have from the spring of 2024. So we gave the survey last year, and then we gave it again this fall, and we'll give it again this spring. Ideally, you have a beginning of the year and the end of the year survey to see growth over time. The D E S I survey, 71 other districts across the state, that's who we're being compared against. Just as a reminder, there's about 523 districts across the state of Missouri. I believe last year there were like 130 school districts that used this tool. So that is something we have talked about. I'll be honest, for what we need and what we're required to give, it asks pretty good questions. It meets the criteria. It gives us, data is not in the most user-friendly of ways, but it gives us good data. It just takes me a little bit longer and I don't mind that for free. So, because the other things are not very cheap. Uh, see, I need to get out here. I already lost my clicker. Here. I'm like spread out. This is what my desk looks like in my office. It's very, very like, it's not mine. So the information is reported a little bit different than what it was in the spring. It's by domain and dimension. It's the level that I'm sharing with you. We have the data by question, we have it by school. Tonight, I'm just sharing the big picture data at the district level. I have one-on-one meetings with our principals and I am sharing their individual building data with them. And then they will be sharing their individual building data with their teachers, so that they'll be able to look at all of this. The participation rate for parents, this is something I haven't worked on. Uh, anybody get a word? We had only 106 parents take the survey, and that's actually down from the spring where it was 168. I will say, we don't get to set the window and the window was in between Election Day and Thanksgiving. So maybe not the best time and we don't, we don't have any flexibility with that. But we did talk a little bit around, because ideally, I would love to give it, in my previous life, we would give it during like parent teacher conference week. And then parents just step in there while they're waiting for their teacher, the computer's out for them to fill it in a captive audience type way. So we're going to start brainstorming some ways to get just an increase in participation because the data is actually really valuable and I think it's really important, but it's only as valuable as the amount of students that take it. We also did that, we had some positives and then some negatives with students. Elementary students, unfortunately, we only had 77. There was something that happened and we are not quite sure what. We only had 20 students from Mark Twain. So when Mark Twain looks at their data, it's hard for them to really, it's third, fourth, and fifth grade students that were supposed to take it. And it appears they maybe only have one grade level. So we're trying to dig into what happened there. And again, this, we're, it's the first time that we've done it in, under my, my leadership and definitely some room to improve here on, on how we communicate that. Secondary, last year, we only had 180, oh, no. Yes, 180 students total. This year, we had 289, which is great. There was a minor hiccup. The middle school students were recorded through D E S I. The high school students missed the window and so they took it up, we typed up all the questions and they took it on a Google form. And I got to, you know, do some mathematician work. There were certain pieces I can't do to compare, but we were still able to get good meaningful data. And the good news is, we had 100 and, we had 150, I think it was, high school? I think my guess here, yeah. So we had a really good turnout in the high school and the middle school. Students, well over at least 80% of the students participated, which is great. And then staff, we actually increased as well. We went from 66 staff members who took it last year to 110 staff members. So a good kind of overall total. So these are the domains that, this is how the data is, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Does D E S I require us to report on results to them, or is this just their tool they're giving to us?
Yeah. So there is no points or credit for how we do. It's just, did you give the survey or did you not? And it is part of our overall, the continuous improvement points that we get, but it's, did you do it, did you not?
What percentage of staff took it? It's 110. Or no, rough.
The staff, Andrew Miller on the point.
So would SS be included? I think we're like a hundred and thirty?
But it was also, yeah, so it was really good numbers. We did ask our principals to have it done at a faculty meeting or to emphasize it. So we are, again, captive audiences, trying to find ways to get those captive audiences. It's, again, that's the middle school, but with the students, we just got to find a way to do that with our
That's really good.
Community as well. So when you look, excuse me, the data is reported into four big chunks, academic, community, relationships, and safety. And then in each domain or chunk, there are different dimensions. And so those, you can read that. I don't need to read each one of those to you. But you'll see in the younger students, there's certain areas that are not, like, so there's no instructional design for younger kids or older students, but for staff, which makes sense, right? Because the questions are about instruction. So you can kind of see from there that, that when I share out this information, not each, not each, there's not going to be data for each one. It aligns with what they asked the questions about. So we're going to start with parent results. I'm not going to belabor the numbers, but some great news with our parent numbers. I did want to, each of these slides, and you can dig into this, I will actually upload the PDF to a weekend update. It's 215 pages. So at your leisure, feel free to, to go through it as much as you'd like. One of, one of the downfalls of the D E S I model is that it doesn't have the bells and whistles, which is great, but, I mean, it's great. But it does make it a little bit more challenging to go through all the data. But I did want to put the spring data down so that you can see from spring to fall in the different areas. And then I did include the state average. So you can see in, for the parents, some great celebrations in each one of these categories. And it was a four-point Likert scale. So four is strongly agree, three is agree, then two is disagree, and then one was strongly disagree. So when you look at these, some, some highlights for academic, for all of the parents actually in each area, is that we saw an increase pretty much across the board from the spring of 2024. And in every, they also reported this data in quartiles. And for all of the parent information, we were in the fourth quartile, which means that we scored in the 75th percentile or higher of schools that, of districts that took this. So across the board for our parents, we were in the highest dimensions, or the highest quartile that you could be in for their scores. And again, in almost area, academic, as well as community, we saw some increases. The shared values and collaboration, I think the board can take full credit for with the strategic planning and vision. This is one of the areas we did see one of the larger increases. And so, again, also where you see we beat the state average by one of the more significant months. Relationships, we see the parent family partnerships and teacher-student relationships. This did not surprise me in the slightest, to be honest. I mean, this is one of the things that makes Brentwood, Brentwood, is the relationships. And so to see the 3.46 being one of our higher areas is good news. And again, seeing some incremental shifts in the positive as well from the spring. And then safety, which was really great. This, this actually happened before. The survey was taken before we had our kind of safety concern that happened in December. I would be a little bit curious, good, bad, I'm not sure where that would have led to people. For staff and students, these are not our highest area. And I have some comments I'll talk about in a minute, just of why I think that might be and some things we can do to help. Because I think some of it's about communication, not necessarily what it is that we're doing or having placed, but making sure everybody knows what they can and will not. But again, another physical and emotional wellbeing was a pretty significant jump from 3.27 to 3.49 for our parents, which is great. And again, we exceeded the state average pretty significantly. So for our parents, again, to be in the top quartile in every dimension is a huge celebration. And it shows that our community, for the most part, is pretty happy. But again, love for ourselves. Would like, like to have, have more people take it to make sure that the sample size that we had is, is pretty small. And I'd like to get a little bit more there, but the results are good. For staff, staff varied a little bit more in the quartiles. The good news is, they did live in the above 50th percentile in all of the quartiles except for one. So academic, again, outperformed the state for the staff, really across the board, and saw increases in most areas. You will see instructional design to take a little bit of a dip. I've printed off, you can even, when I send you the 214 page document, you can actually see the questions that aligned under each one of these categories to know, like, okay, well, what does that mean? Where are we scoring low, lower? You can see all of that. So for kinds of questions that you would see in instructional design, or things like students' level of prior knowledge is assessed before initiating instruction, assessment issues that provides timely feedback, teachers use assessment data to evaluate and align curriculum. So a lot of our curriculum and instruction work that we're doing, I'm hopeful will, will help increase that as well. For community, again, an area connected as an engagement, we saw a pretty significant increase. Discipline, we saw a really big increase, but it is still actually one of our lowest. It's one of the areas we fell in the second quartile, which is 25th to 50th percentile. So that was kind of surprising to me, but we did see an increase. So that's a, that's a positive that we're moving in the right direction. It may not surprise you, discipline at the secondary level was one of the lower scores versus elementary, where it was one of the higher, which is, I'll be honest, in every district I've ever been in, just kind of the nature of children's behaviors as they get older, it's different. Fairness and access, and then shared values and collaboration. Again, we see small shifts in the right direction. Relationships, this is where staff also was in the fourth quartile, so 75th percentile or higher across the state. And we, again, saw some increases there and exceeded the state average. And then safety is the area where I will say emergency readiness management, where actually is the only area we are in the first quartile for. And so that is one, and one of the areas we went down ever so slightly, but one of the, I think it's the only area, and maybe one more, that we did not beat the state average. And so I have spent a lot of time, this morning actually, I was at Brentwood Police Department, meeting with Major Hawkins, reviewing kind of what had happened in December, as well as talking through some active shooter training that we're going to do in the fall, some just general things that we've been working on. But I will say that I, I think we, I mean, it's my voice, I think I need to do a better job of making sure that all of our staff are aware of all of the things that we've been doing since the beginning, since I got here in July. The amount of times that I've met with the Brentwood Police Department, the building site assessments that they have gone through and done, the recommendations that they've given to us that we're following, as well as their overall perception of how safe our buildings are. I, communication of that, to make sure that the staff feels that way. And I will say, a real, a real area of growth is our professional development around safety. And we have plans in place, our district's safety committee, which just started this year. We started, we had our first meeting back in September. We've had a couple of meetings so far. That's been our focus, is trainings that we need to provide so our teachers feel comfortable and confident in the area of safety. So although it is one of our lower areas, it does. So although it is one of our lower areas, it doesn't shock me that, that way. And the good news is we've already done some things that I think will help move that needle in that area and then work on communicating that and making sure that we can do more as a district.
I think your emergency readiness enhancement is gonna go up.
I hope so. I bet.
I suppose you've handled that very well.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, so for younger students, their scores are out of three. I will tell you, I didn't leave the five point. It was like, what is wrong with them? Our little ones should be the happiest, what's going on? Um, so luckily I went back and read the five points, and we're totally solid. It's out of three, not out of four. It's like yes, no, sometimes were the choices that they were given. Um, so, and they're little, so I don't wanna dismiss their feedback, it's appreciated. Yes. They are, um, I will say that this, uh, again, the scores were in the second and third quartile a little bit more. I would say holistically, our student responses are the ones that I'd like to dig a little bit deeper into. Um, some of the questions, when you dig into the questions, um, and that's what the principals will do with their staff. It's like, what are, what is this really telling us? You know, and again, with Mark Twain only having twenty students take it, there's, there's something, a caveat, you know, kind of behind all of this, it's a very small percentage. Um, and there were like seventy-seven kids from McGrath that took it, so. Um, but we did see, the good news is there were a couple of different things. I will tell you, the, the positive mindset was shocking, um, to my principals. They were, because they spent a lot of time working on positive mindset, you know, Mark Twain, for example, their leader in Newark. They're, you know, those assemblies are phenomenal, and the kids of the super, the growth mindset work they do in their cadet groups is very surprising. So just digging a little bit deeper into that and asking some questions of, is this, is it the questions that were being asked? Or is it, you know, truly a field that the kids have and just kind of?
You know, with Mark Twain, are we gonna go back and solicit more feedback to get comparable counts?
We can do the same thing that we did at the high school. Yeah, we can do what we did at the high school, we just put it on a Google form. And then we just had, we haven't gotten a chance, we got this data right before winter break, and then with everything that happened, tail end of winter break, I just shared it with principals and before their week. I shared it with Carol, so we're gonna dig into who didn't take it to make sure we're not getting repetitive data. And then, because it is a lot of questions, I will say. My student experience board advisory feedback was, we just started putting numbers in after a while, is the language one of the students gave me.
If I can add just one piece along with that, with the younger students, that we reviewed some of these results in one of our, um, staff committees, and some of the feedback at the elementary level was that the, the questions also starts to get a little confusing for the younger students, because sometimes they're negatively coded. So if it's phrased like bullying is a problem at my school, then like the one and three are reversed, but they've been going through check and greet for everything. So just learning about our administration of these tools as well, and what support we need to make sure students understand what's being asked and how the response is.
Yeah, good point. So these are all, you know, as we're learning this together, I think, great opportunities for growth too, to make sure the data, it is one data point, it is not the be all and all, but what I, I had an assessment person I worked with in my previous job that I, I quote all the time, she always says, "Good data should make you ask more questions, not provide answers." And so really taking a look at this and just asking ourselves the questions, what, what can we tell? You know, like, it isn't, it isn't the be all and all, I had to tell Carol, it's okay. I'm sure your children have positive mindset there, let's just breathe, it's gonna be good. And let's talk about what it is, what questions can we ask kids about this too? Um, community, again, um, we did, uh, a little bit of a dip in connectedness and engagement. We did exceed the state average. But, uh, we were in, for connectedness engagement, we were in the second quartile, and we were in the third quartile for fairness and access. For relationships, you can see, um, again, we saw dips, um, really kind of across the board in relationships, which was a little bit surprising to me. We, I'll by the skin of our teeth beat the state average. But ironically, we were in the third quartile. So this is just, I wonder how they ask the questions, because we were in the third quartile, which means fifty to seventy-fifth percentile for peer relationships, even though it feels like we went in the wrong direction. Um, but then for respecting differences in teacher-student relationships, it was in the, um, second quartile. What was interesting too, when we were looking at this at the Student Experience Board Advisory, we were curious, because like the parents, sometimes like my, my, my teachers give me assignments that are, like, at my level or, or they challenge me, and student response didn't match what parents' responses were to a similar question of like, are ki-, are our kids challenged? And parents are like, yes, it's great. And like, do my teachers help me? Like, it was just an interesting, kind of trying to figure out, there's a disconnect at times between what the parents' responses were and what the kids' responses were. Which again, also is not surprising. Me making my kids eat vegetables, I think I'm a parent of the year. They, they do not. Safety, uh, safety, this was another area to hear where, again, even for the little kids, and I think this is always that fine line with little ones of not trying to scare them, but making sure that they know that they're prepared. Um, and so we actually were in the first quartile for emergency readiness and management. And so that, you know, we do our drills, we have conversations, but it's that, where's the, the line in that? Making sure they're prepared without scaring them. And then physical and emotional wellbeing, um, actually went up. And we beat the state numbers there, and that is actually an area that we were in the fourth quartile. So the highest quartile for physical and emotional wellbeing for our littles. Okay, and then for our older results, this, um, this is where I had to, I'll be honest, I didn't, I don't know the math that they did to merge the numbers, like, and I, I couldn't get to the primary level, and honestly, it would've taken me more time than it was worth. So this is where you see the middle school and the high school separated account. So you still have the data, but I don't have, you'll notice I don't have an overall score for academic, because I don't, I didn't have the high school data to merge with that. I didn't wanna assume what they did mathematically. So, but you can see, um, we did see, and I was surprised by some of these, to be perfectly honest, um, but we saw a dip in learning expectations and reinforcement. But I will also say again, remember, we had double the amount of students take the survey this year, which is good, because it means it's an accurate reflection. Again, to get feedback that it was long, it was the day they got back from Snowmageddon, and may have played a bit of a factor, not trying to dismiss the fact that we did go lower. And so these little questions that we'll be asking our team, um, and the principals will bring, be bringing to their leadership teams and then deciding, you know, how do we share this and have conversations with our students? For community, um, oh, and those scores, I'm sorry, the scores under academic did put us in the third quartile, so above the fiftieth percentile compared to schools, um, across the state. For community, in the connectedness and engagement, we were actually in the second quartile. Um, but we were in the fourth quartile for fairness and access, which is interesting. Because those are lower scores, but at the, at, you know, I guess at secondary level, students perceive fairness and access a little bit differently, perhaps. Um, and then with relationships, again, um, we did see a dip, but we are in the fourth quartile for peer relationships and teacher-student relationships. So again, we're in the top quarter of school responses. Respecting differences was in the third quartile, so that's still in that top half, even though we did see a dip.
What did, can I ask one question about? Because you see respecting differences in a couple, uh, areas, um, in those cohorts. What, what are the question, or why would that say? Is that like a, yeah, if you could?
So respecting differences for students?
Because it seemed to have gone down in a couple of different areas.
Um, so some of the kinds of questions that were asked, uh, I care about how others feel. I know how to get along with others even if I disagree with them. I can help solve problems among my friends in a positive way. I can work with someone who has different opinions than me. I know how to disagree without starting a fight or an argument, and I am good at solving conflicts with others. And it looks like from a district-wide, for the older students at least, and this was middle, I only have the middle school. But, um, those were in the second, that I can work with someone who has different opinions than me, and I know how to disagree without starting a fight, or our lower, they were in the second quartile. So those are areas that we can.
I, I wonder if there's a difference, um, if you're comparing fall to fall versus fall to spring.
Yep, that is actually a really good question.
Have you looked at last fall's? Do you have?
I don't have, I don't have it.
Okay.
So if it exists, I don't know where it is, um, but I do have the spring. And so we'll be able to do a, I think, a much better dive to at the end of the issue.
So how many questions?
There are forty, there are forty more questions. Forty, forty-one? And then safety, for our, um, upper grades, we're in the third quartile for both of those. We did see a bit of a, uh, it's pretty, it stayed the same for emergency readiness, and it stayed the same for physical and emotional wellbeing, and a little bit of a dip at the, at the high school. So really, looking at all of this, the highlights, again, I think I hit most of these through this, is parent scores increased in all areas, plus they were in the fourth, you know, the highest quartile across the board. Um, district outperformed the state in almost all dimensions and all groups, so at students, uh, which is great. So the data shows us what we kind of already knew, which is we are doing some really great things as a district, and the overall culture and climate, I think, here is very positive. There are areas to grow, as in any organization. Um, I do have some questions at the secondary level. They were not major, like catastrophic shifts, to your point. I do wonder the difference between the fall and the spring. I do wonder the difference when you're required to sit and take it versus, and you take this when you get a chance. It's different, voluntold versus volunteer. Um, so I do wonder, and it'll be interesting, because we're gonna follow the same model in the spring, so they will be voluntold again, but at least then it'll be comparing the, the way in which people gave it the same. Um, I will say school safety, I've already mentioned that, that is something, and I, and I think actually we're doing a lot of really great things, I just wanna make sure we're doing a good job communicating what those are and, you know, listening to our kids about what are some of their areas of concern. Um, and then increasing participation, you know, this is, um, this helps us. When I look at this data and I look at our strategic plan, so many of the questions and so many of the areas do align to the work we're trying to do as part of our strategic plan. Um, and so this can be a really good tool for us, if we get more people to take it and understand why it's important. So just working, Tony and I can work together on how do we push that out in a variety of different ways? How do we help, um, work with our PTOs, work with kind of captive audiences as we know people are coming, when those windows open, to try to get more input? Because again, this is really helpful, and, you know, I didn't get into the weeds with some of the questions, but that is then what the next steps are, or like I said, the principals are digging into it. They're gonna dig into it with their leadership team and then with their teachers. Uh, and then at the secondary level too, it's conversations, like, let's talk with the kids. Because they're the ones, um, you know, all data should create the questions that ask you, like, is this an anomaly? Is this a misunderstanding, or is there really areas that we need to improve on? And like I said, in any organization, there are areas to improve. So I think it was a really good, I was, um, glad to get this information and get this data. Uh, of course, we get it in the end of December, early January, we'll be administering it again, I think, at like March or April. So, um, but I do think there's, um, being able to have these conversations, and as it becomes more of a habit, because this'll just be something they do, it, um, may annoy the children, but, uh, you know, survey fatigue is a real thing. But hopefully, um, it will just become part of, if they understand that we're doing something that it's meaningful to improve their experience at school, and so for parents and teachers, hopefully, a little bit more.
Are there open, um, yields available to, to collect specific feedback or comments?
No, we can, yeah, unfortunately, that's where the pros and cons of a purchased tool. Um, we use Panorama, it was a, was a popular one in a lot of districts, she was out in the area. Um, and you could add your own questions, or you could add, you know, blank, open-ended questions to get feedback. Unfortunately, with the DESI tool, we do not have that autonomy. It's, this is the, this is the tool.
People's thoughts can't flow through here.
Yeah, quite as well.
So all the data is from, you know, at the state level, right?
Uh huh.
Do they have it where we can compare against other comparable districts in our area?
So that's the hard part. I have not thought, no. So as of right now, no. I can ask them about that if that's something, because I don't even know who the other seventy-one schools are. So I will share with you that, and, and I'm not, I go back and forth on the paid pro. If you do a paid one, you get national normed, you know, you can actually, like the Panorama, you can sort by suburban school. You can sort by your free release lunch number, so you're kind of comparable, um, districts to see where you fall in that, um, information. Uh, but there are cons to those as well, um, as far as if you wanna get normed, you can't change the questions, that they're very intensive. But you, you have the pros of being able to kind of add questions as long as you don't care that they're not actually normed. Uh, you can ask questions specific to your strategic plan without adding a whole nother survey, because of the survey fatigue. So there's pros and cons into that. For this year, it was, this one will give us a continuity of data, otherwise the spring data is almost useless. So it gives us a little bit of continuity, and if we need to investigate one of those other tools, we can. But right now, we can't. And I will, I would, no, I'm not, I don't know how many comparable districts probably take the DESI survey.
That's what I was kinda.
Would be my guess, but that is for no other reason than the reason that this was created, was to create the, the free version for districts who weren't already doing something, because many districts already had something in place. So, um, but I'll, I'll see if I can find that information, it's not provided with what they've shared with us thus far, but.
I mean, not that it would necessarily drive anything different, but, you know, when we, we're comparing ourselves always to the state level, that's great, but it's really, are we actually getting better? Are we comparing ourselves to ourselves each and every semester? And how are we getting better? What changes are we making? I think that's probably the most important piece, but it's always good to understand if, um, other, how other districts around us are performing too.
Absolutely.
So with this data, um, so I know we have a little bit on dashboard, like student satisfaction. Do you, you're sharing everything with the principals, do the students get to look at?
Yes, ideally they were, so that's part of what we're gonna talk through when I meet with the principals. That's part of our conversation, is what is the, the right way, and each building may be a little bit different. Um, we are still at a point where the principals are dissecting their data, and then you go to their, I wanted you to see it. And so then, now that you see it, um, and district administration is seeing it, the principals will all be sharing it there. And again, they just got it in almost a week and a half, they will be sharing with their staff. And then from there, they will be, um, determining what is the best way to work with students on that. And there's ways that, you know, if you have families, is it taking one chunk that you're thinking the building needs to work on, and getting that feedback from teachers, like, oh, this is what we wanna talk about. Okay, and then let's ask the kids. And so it may look different at each building, but ideally they will, they will also be seeing it. It is on the dashboard, but the dashboard, and I'll show this later, the, they changed how they reported it from last year, and that made it a little bit difficult for me personally, to figure out how to report it. But if you click on the, uh, when you go to the dashboard, you can click on the school culture, and I've added more graphs with some of this data. Um, I'm not sure exactly where I stopped, but, um, there should be some fall. Yeah, that's the fall, oh, I made twenty twenty-three, I made the fall of twenty twenty-four. There are some graphs in the strategic dashboard so that you can see kind of how we did in these different areas, underschool culture. Remember, you look at something two thousand times to make sure there's not a typo. Aw, man. Any questions about the culture and climate, sir?
Yeah, one last question.
Yeah.
So when they bring the results back, it starts getting spread out to the groups, and are they soliciting feedback from them on what their thoughts are of why they get these differences? And is that going back up to you?
Yes, because that's what we'll talk about in the one on ones, so yes, that's part of there. And ideally, what we'll be able to do when they get the spring data is, as we look towards next year, so the principals hadn't really gotten to dig into their spring data last year for transition and leadership and all of that. So next year, part of when they're building their school improvement plan goals will be based on this data. So they'll use this information to talk through, like, these are areas that I saw for growth. So now, I wanna, you know, make them as part of your plan.
And are the PTO engaged on this as well?
Oh, we have not yet, but yeah, we absolutely can have conversations with them. My goal, my goal is for the PTO to, because that's a wonderful opportunity for them to see the importance of this and, and hopefully encourage more people to take it as well and tap into them as well. It's a great idea. Any new questions? I think that is it for me.
Oh, wait.
Oh, school board candidate. It is not, uh, it is not for me. So we have three, um, candidates for the school board, uh, running for school board. We have Mr. Ryan Flynn, we have Ms. Kate Moncler, and Mr. Clayton Zach have all filed to run for the board. We will be having on March thir-, okay, all right, March third, um, the League of Women Voters will be hosting. We will be having on March third, March third, the League of Women Voters will be hosting kind of a town hall to meet the candidates and ask questions of the candidates, and we hope lots of people can join. I think that's it, my assembly, I was so excited about, logged me out, so now it's spinning, so I don't know what else it says.
Good.
Yep, that's it, I get everything? Yep, absolutely. I can think of it off the top of my head, pretty impressive. Oh, election day is April eighth, so, can I show you Tuesday, April eighth? There are two seats available.
Okay, awesome to have candidates.
I think Tony gave him four.
So good, so good. All right. So then that brings us to Board of Education, we have several, many, not even several, many policies that we have gone over and.
I will, I'll make a motion to approve the policies as outlined.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, those are all approved. And then an MSBA delegate report, Keith, anything to report?
There's not too much going on, how the process for getting nominations for the statewide R officers is starting now for a motion. And that's, they'll be elected at the June meeting. You know, I've been the delegate for some time, you know, I, I'm not going to get this board forever, if there's anybody else who thinks as an interzone. Lindsay's actually done that a couple of times, when she was at the conference, and then filled in as a delegate, I was doing something else. So if there's anybody has some interest in doing that, feel free to talk with me about it, you know. We kind of informally select somebody to your, your organization, maybe, it doesn't have to be that way forever, or whatever, but I'm happy if you do it, obviously, that somebody will be able to pick up with that after. I know I'm doing it, so think about that.
Yeah, I would say if you have any questions, Keith is great to visit with about the process and what's happening, it's very important. Okay, board committee updates, and we're just getting back from winter break, so I know it's been kind of quiet.
We actually had, my Student Experience Board Advisory and Katie, Katie and Carol are on it, and they were both there, but we did have the student experience, we had a great conversation, we updated them on some of the work and the feedback they had shared. We did a continue, start, and stop at the first meeting, and so I, like, what do you love about Brentwood, and what can we stop doing, and what should we start doing? And so I updated the committee on the things that we have been doing to address that feedback, and then we updated them on the work of our committee, and had them provide us with additional feedback, that the committee work that is led by Dr. Zegora and our four big committees, that actually do the in-the-weeds work, and just ask for their feedback on any areas that we're missing, that they would like to see, and we had great feedback from the kids and the parents, and, yeah.
Great. Anything financed, facilities, teaching and learning? Okay, we have not done community engagement for a while either, so soon, I'm sure, we'll have more updates in the future.
Teaching and learning meeting coming up, right?
This week, yeah.
And I don't have to date my life. Don't have to.
Okay, then that just brings us to upcoming events. As a reminder, we have a board workshop on February fourth here, is that going to be?
It'll be in here, yes. It will not be televised, or televised, it will not be streamed.
Livestreamed.
Livestreamed. We will, it'll be more of a discussion session, little small groups around, and you'll get to sit down and visit with the principals about their school improvement.
I'm not going to be around, but I would be able to walk in if you let me zoom in or something.
If you're okay with it, I am going to like, I'm going to send you a Zoom link, and then I would like, whoever your partner is, will just carry you around, computer to computer, if that works. You can still listen.
We can just take turns. We got you.
You're here, you're going to be totally taken care of, I've got the whole.
You got a robot upstairs.
Yeah. Just be up with the iPad with your face on it.
I'm pretty sure I can, I don't know, I'm sure I'll be available.
I'll send, we'll send you.
Great. And then other things besides our board meetings, I'll just say, if anyone's watching, again, you mentioned the School Board Candidate Forum on March third at six thirty here in this room. Other big exciting one, which I love, the Senior Citizens Brunch is Tuesday, April twenty-second, birthday.
It is birthday.
I was like, I know you.
We thought it might be a theme, we might tie that into the theme of the Senior Citizens Brunch, just saying.
I love that.
I talked about it.
Where is it going to be?
Cafeteria, the high school cafeteria.
And then also, don't forget the chili cook-off on Friday, NHS, NHS Chili Cook-Off at five o'clock, followed by basketball, I think, girls and boys.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, big night.
Should be a lot of fun.
Mm-hmm. Great. Middle school fundraiser is off, if we're just throwing out, activity is middle school fundraiser.
February first.
Yes. So, very exciting.
One other date, I can't be at the SSD meeting, and it's a very important one. I think they're going to let me do it virtually, I got to confirm it, it's on March third, and it's elections of two SSD board members.
Yeah, March third.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure they're going to, because they do these things virtually also, but last year was all virtual, this year, three of the four are in person, so I noticed on one of the other meetings that there was people, so I'll be able to be on it, but I might, if they don't allow that, I mean, I know it's your.
I mean, I'll be at the town hall, I think it's on.
No, I know you, I know it's all for you. But what I'm saying is.
It's a multitask, or a matter of fact.
I'm sure everybody wants to be there, you know, from the board, but.
Okay.
I'll, I'll text you tomorrow, I'll call with it.
Okay, that sounds great, I mean, we can see what we can do. Okay, anything else before we adjourn to close session? We could have a motion for the close session.
Close, not second.
Okay, we'll do both of these.
Mark Cicero?
Yes.
Ryan Dotson?
Yes.
Ryan Flynn?
Yes.
Keith Reifenberg?
Yes.
Katie Spahl? Lindsey Spencer?
Yes.
Carrie Trossell?
Wonderful. Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for braving the frigid hours. I know.
We're just grateful you're here.
Very brave. That's where I would be watching it on the little.
Well, I won't, but.